Good evening. The October 16th, 2025 Board Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let's kick it off once you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. By way of the roll call, I believe everybody is here except trustee Hamel. Is trustee Jennings joining us by phone? Are you there? Hello? I believe trustee Jennings is joining us by phone, so she'll let us know when she joins us. All right. Let's get started with the sunny part of our board meeting every month, and that is the awards and recognition. And I'll turn it over to you.
Great. All right. We have a great one tonight. Baptiste Raffin is a French international student from Grenoble, the unofficial capital of the Alps in France. Baptiste arrived in Kansas City in July 2024 and is in his second year at JCCC. He is majoring in liberal arts. He is on the president's list for the fall and spring semesters of last year, and he's a member of the Tennessee -- excuse me, of the National Society of Leadership and Success. Baptiste is the editor and chief of the JCCC Student Media, the messenger. He previously was the news editor, so we'll hand it over to him now.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mixa. Bonjour, everyone. Like Dr. Mixa says, I'm an international student from France and my second year at JCCC. My journey to JCCC, my view, on top of being an international student, a little different than other international students, I already have a French master's degree in public and media information and communication, and I graduated with that in 2021, started working in France. And after professional disappointment, I realized that what I always wanted to do was work in media, in TV hosting, and if I really wanted to do that, I needed to learn from the place where, to me, I have the best television, television that I like and would like to do. So I started in the fall of 2023, looking at colleges online, contacted eight to 10 colleges, all got community colleges, four-year colleges, got great answers from all of them, but there was a warmth in the emails that I got with the International Students Services from here that always drew me back here, even though some other places might have had a journalism degree. JCCC has a journalism program, but no degree. I kept telling my dad, I don't know, the JCCC one seems really great, and he said, well, if that's the one that you want to go for, go for it. So I did it, and then I applied at the end of January 2024 and got here, started in August 2024. Since I arrived here, I had a lot of opportunities to learn for my future job with a lot of great journalism classes that are in the journalism program, and got a lot of great opportunities with these classes to interview people in the industry. I'm thinking of Frank Boal, who used to be a Fox Sports legend, that I got interviewed for a class. And also professional opportunities, I became the news editor of the Messenger last spring and was able to upgrade in a way to editor-in-chief this fall, which gives me, again, another great opportunities. I was able to interview for an event that was supposed to happen, it's not happening anymore, but actors from a movie that were supposed to come to JCCC, which was a great thing for me. I've always been passionate about movies. And it also helped me get, helped me for my future, like, it helped me get Kansas tuition with that job and helped me, I think, be at this event tonight and other events in the future, like One Enchanted, even that takes place in November and that the Messenger will be a part of. For the future, I don't really know what it's going to look like for me. With my background coming from France, I don't know yet if, with an optional practical training, if going into the job world already is a possibility, or transferring to another institution to get a bachelor's degree after graduating with my Associates of Arts from here.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing with us. I have lots of questions, but I'm going to open it up to my fellow trustees first, and I'm sure they have questions as well. So trustee Ratan.
Thank you. Very nice to meet you, Baptiste. Thanks for coming here to Kansas, of all the places you could have gone in the United States. And thanks also for getting involved. I can imagine you go somewhere, you're learning the culture, but you jumped right in and got involved, and so kudos to you for doing that. I do hope that you write about your experience somewhere and share that with us. And when you say you want to go into journalism and media, is there a specific genre or area you'd like to go into?
Yeah, I don't really know. It was up to me, I would go into news, sports, and entertainment, do it all. I don't really know. Growing up, I was more focused, thinking of something going into entertainment, and then started watching American football, and I was like, oh, I'm really interested in sports. News is also an option, I would say. I really like the morning news more than the afternoon news, where it's more lighthearted, but I'm keeping all of my options open.
So American football and morning news.
Yeah. Or talk shows.
My second question is, what's your favorite food or restaurant here?
My favorite food or restaurant here, I really like fried chicken. Yeah, and I like Cheesecake Factory.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Gibt's the Deutsch?
What did you say? You speak Deutsch?
Do you speak German?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no.
No.
French, English, and Spanish.
Pardon.
That's a lot.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett.
As always, thank you so much for telling us about your story and how you got here. I'm really glad to know that even that many miles away, you could feel the warmth of this place and the belonging that we value so much, and we hope, you know, that everybody feels like you did. So here's my two big questions for you. What is the biggest cultural difference that you've had to adjust to? And then what is the biggest educational difference from, you know, you've already gone through several degrees in France and here?
Yeah. I would say, I always get the question, how was it to adapt to the different country? I had come to the United States so many times before moving here, so I knew there weren't that many surprises for me anymore. I think I'm still a little bit surprised by how early you guys ate dinner and also the how nice, I would say, and welcoming Americans are. My family was here over the summer, and my dad told me that, my grandpa told him again, like, how great his experience was and how happy he was too. Every day was like, oh, oh my God. And on the educational side, I would say the relationship with professors, the way we treat each other, we interact with each other, the way classes happen. I think two weeks in, I told my parents, I don't think I can step foot in a French classroom ever again after my experience here, because it's really different, the whole atmosphere is really different and welcoming.
That's, you have highlighted what I was hoping to hear, which is, that's the Midwest warmth, kindness, generosity. I've lived on different coasts in this country too, and everybody has their own flavor of what they prefer, and I'm really glad that you found a place that seems to kind of reflect you as a person, too, very warm, genuine, and kind. So thank you so much for sharing your story. I can tell your future is bright. You're going to launch from here, and we're going to see you on some, you know, I was trying to think what the show is with the wives of, the bad wives of Hollywood, what's his name? What's the cultural reporter? He always does the New Year's Eve show with.
Andy.
I noticed how she's looking at you, because none of the rest of us are going to have a clue.
I got you, girl. Yes, yes. Andy Cohen.
Andy Cohen. So we will see you with Andy Cohen somewhere on a show, and we'll say we knew him when. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, anybody else have any questions? Baptiste, thanks for sharing your story with us. Where in France are you from?
It's, so Grenoble, it's in the Alps, in the valley. We're about two hours from Switzerland and probably, I'd say, Italy too. It's famous for older people. We had the Winter Olympics in 1968.
For older people?
I mean.
Do you remember that, Baptiste?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's okay.
You didn't seem like you, like, you would be that age, so that's.
Back it up, back it up.
Well, France is beautiful. I've been there several times, and it's a beautiful country, and that's particularly a beautiful area. I find it interesting that you ended up in Kansas City, because after all, we do have the American football team, right? So if you're going to, if you're going to watch American football, Kansas City is.
I was watching before moving, I was watching the Chiefs before moving.
Yeah, all right, all right. Your English is impeccable, by the way. Good luck to you. And I would say to you just this, it is people like you who come here with their stories from different places, who bring something and add something to the enrichment of the other students that you interact with and with all of us. I think that learning about different cultures and understanding how things are different around the world is critical to us understanding what makes the world work. And so thank you for sharing that. Thank you for coming to Kansas City. We're so privileged to have you, so thank you so much.
I have another little thing that I forgot to.
You go right ahead.
In 2023, I spent three days in Kansas City without knowing about JCCC or anything, and I remember it's a nice place to live, and I took a picture of the sign on the highway that says, Leaving Kansas, Come Again Soon, and I put it on Instagram saying, well, hopefully. And eleven months later, I was moving here, so.
That's awesome. That is so awesome. That's such a wonderful story. All right. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for sharing.
I wish I could stay, but to stay on the president's list, I have an exam tomorrow, so I'm going to go home and stay.
That's fine. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and in that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or the board. It's my understanding that there are no registered speakers at tonight's meeting, and so we will proceed to the next item on the agenda, and that is the board report section. First up is Student Senate and Oliver Gonzalez. What do you have for us tonight?
I have my board report. Well, good evening, trustees. I got to whip it out real quick. So we have five new senators for the Student Senate, Ashley Nicole Kalabou, Vanu, Abram, Joy, Ellie, and Lauren. Sorry if I butchered their names, but we currently have nine or 10 senators. We plan to have one sworn in very soon, this next week or current week. We want to build a dedicated senate. That's why it's currently a little bit smaller than previous years. We have approved seven funding requests since the last board meeting. The International Club, they are working on student engagement activities like punk and carving, and we have the Mall United Nations, which has two funding requests that we've approved for them. They have a competition that they're competing in St. Louis and Chicago. And then we approved one new club, the Game Development Club. We are currently working on growing our social media presence. So far, we have around six videos and around 7,000 views, which I think sounds pretty impressive. We have two big events going on right now. Trick or Treat for Kids, which will be next Thursday on October 23rd. It's in the comm atrium or the cafeteria. All the board members are invited or anyone in this room. It's a cool event. We have all the tables. We have several clubs tabling there, around 15 or plus from JCCC. We have the police department there. It'll be pretty cool and fun. We're looking for donations of candy, which you can bring to the CSI or the president's office. We have also our second big event, JCCC Gives. It's, we're underprivileged staff or students on campus. We, they get nominated. I think those nominations just ended recently, but they're nominated, and they send a list into us, and we work to get them those needs they need for the holidays. And we are currently hosting two fundraising events for it. We have the Raising Canes fundraising event on October, or on November 6th, and we have the Chick-fil-A event on October 30th. I don't know, it's the best way for me to pass this around. Do I just?
Kelsey will take them, yeah, and pass them down. Love to have them.
And then I'm now open for questions.
All right. Thanks for your report, Oliver. We always look forward to it. Questions for, by the way, I heard a rumor that you have some special guests in the audience. Would you like to introduce them?
Oh, yes. I got my two lovely grandparents and my older sister, previous student senate president, Apuna Gonzalez.
So I just want to say, this family tradition thing, we love it here. So let's just keep it up. So he's doing all right, right? Yeah, all right. All right. All right. Questions for Mr. Gonzalez. Trustee Ratan.
Can you repeat the Halloween event again?
Oh, Trick or Treat for Kids will be on October 23rd. We are inviting all Board of Trustees members or anyone in this room to come. You can meet community members and interact.
Afternoon.
It'll be from 5:00 to 8:00. Thank you. 5:00 to 8:00 PM, afternoon.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Smith Everett.
Well, Oliver, my burning question is, you said that the senate was kind of smaller than in previous years, because you're really looking for a dedicated senate. So have you had to kick out non-dedicated people to make sure that the people, is there a rigorous test that you give them, or any kind of credentials you're looking for for this dedication?
We're kind of just like making sure people are, like, want to volunteer and want to get, interact in all these events. In previous years, I've heard that not, like, people weren't going to all these events and stuff, so we want to make sure that they're going to all these standard events, like the Trick or Treat for Kids, getting involved in the JCCC Gives, and really trying to help out JCCC Community College.
I love that, and I'm totally teasing you. Thank you again for your report. You're doing great.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it sounds like things are moving along swimmingly, so good for you. You're feeling like things are moving along pretty well with your new sort of format with the dedicated senate? You're liking that idea?
Yes.
All right, good. It sounds like a great idea to me. I agree with you that it's always better to have a group where folks really believe in what it is that they're doing and demonstrate that by really being participatory, and thank you for being that leader. We really appreciate it. So thanks for your report.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. And congratulations, guys.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, you want to pass this around? Sorry.
Oh, don't forget the Chick-fil-A.
There was another one.
All right. Next up is our college lobbyist, and Mr. Dick Carter. I hear you've been busy.
I have been, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I got to thinking when you introduced the student spotlight section as the sunny part of the meeting. I'm wondering what part of the weather report I follow. Hopefully, it's not horrible just yet. We can wait until January to talk about that.
It's not a hurricane.
Okay, good.
All right.
So a good portion of the first part of my report talks a little bit about where we're at with the budget. I always do that, but where we're at with the budget, a little bit of how some of the things that are going on at the federal level are playing into what the Kansas budget might look like, and then some of the pieces of what goes into developing the budget. And I think I would just summarize it by saying revenue collections for the month of September were flat. That's the first time since the beginning of the fiscal year that we've kind of shown not a lot of growth. The trends continue in the appropriate categories, where we've been seeing the dollars flow, whether they're up or down, and they're listed in my report by bulleted items. I think we need to remain aware of what will likely happen after the implementation of HR1, the big beautiful bill, and what those dollars might look like as it relates to Kansas. There are definitely going to be some impacts as far as federal dollars that flow for SNAP and for renewable energy credits. Those are some of the probably smaller pieces as it relates to the Kansas budget overall. I think where it will be interesting to watch is when it comes to the federal tax conformity issues, and we already have a little bit of what probably contributes to some of the reporting in Kansas through the SALT piece, which is the state and local tax portion, where you can claim different deductions depending on the type of business that you are. I think that that could show some impact to the Kansas budget as lawmakers are beginning to develop what that budget looks like. Governor is out on the road right now doing a budget town hall. Legislators have not started yet their portion of the budget development process, although I think they know exactly where they're going to start and probably likely where they'll end up. So a lot of those pieces go into, again, what we watch from the standpoint of the college and where higher education fits into that bigger piece. I think things will be very flat with the possibility of some minor reductions, but we don't know where those will likely be yet. So we'll be watching those very closely. Enrollment picture across the system is not bad at all. This is the year where the enrollment cliff was supposed to kick in, and I think that with regard to numbers across the three sectors in higher education, things look very, very good for higher ed. And so I've listed where we fit into that mix. You probably received the press release from the Board of Regents, but I think it's important to track where we fit in amongst the rest of higher ed in the state of Kansas. And then I'll just finish kind of on the big piece. You know, are we going to be, are we sitting in the third district this month and maybe in a different congressional district by the time the year starts? Not really sure. There's a lot of activity going on, and that's the big, that's the big talk right now in Kansas, and this is the bullseye. Johnson County has the bullseye for congressional redistricting before it might start in 2030. The, I don't know if the, I think the senate is close on getting enough signatures to call a special session. Don't know how close the House is. We hear different numbers day to day on where they are. They have to get that two-thirds constitutional majority to be able to call themselves into a special session. Legislative Coordinating Council has met and set aside a number of dollars for meeting for a three- or four-day special session in order to kind of sweeten the pot and get people to sign on. Different topics have been offered as far as property tax, looking at, the Attorney General would like legislators to talk about gender markers on driver's license. I don't know that that gets people to sign on or not, and I'm not sure what you can do in three or four days on property tax. I'm certain that people are drawing maps right now as we speak. Those can move very quickly depending on how things line up, but that's kind of where we're at right now in the grand scheme of things with regard to interim activity. Next month, we'll start to see, well, the rest of this month and next month, we'll start to see a pickup in a lot of the interim committees that are going to be meeting for the remainder of the year, with the key one that will follow is the Budget Committee as that particular piece develops. That's a great place to stop and see if there's any questions from the trustees.
Before I open it up to questions, did I hear you correctly, gender markers on driver's license?
So that's something that the Attorney General's Office has requested and has been communicating with legislative leadership for a special session, that, part of the special session to address that issue, yes.
What are gender markers?
Well, I think it would be whether or not, how someone is referred based on what someone claims to be on their driver's license.
Okay. All right. Questions for Mr. Carter. Trustee Cross.
Do you think the Attorney General could list the number of students he dated while he was a law professor? That wasn't fair to you, but I thought it was funny. With respect to this redistricting, where are all these voters going to go? Which districts are going to get us?
Yeah, it's a give-and-take process, and having drawn maps in previous redistricting efforts, it's not an easy process to go through, and you're looking at right now where you have one county, well, mainly the third district comprises Johnson County, you could be looking at two or three total congressional districts, depending on what the map looks like.
So that means, I mean, these, these quote moderates and Democrats, they got to bleed somewhere. Somebody's got to get these voters.
Yeah, well, I mean, folks that, folks that draw the maps kind of know where the voters live and where the trends are located, and so they're obviously going to try and draw maps that fit the profile that they desire to see implemented. But again, there's a lot of ways to draw those maps, and it's a very complex process, even though the software makes it easy to sort of pull them on.
I think it's been an issue in Missouri, because I think the staggering realization that somebody's got to get all these Democrats, right? And it could, in words of Senator Claire McCaskill, it really could help affect a wave election in the other way. And then, somebody's got to get us. You've got to be in somebody's district. I'm sure they're lining up to get us.
Not sure who's lining up where.
It's a serious question. I'm like, who's lining up where?
I think you can be, I think you can be certain that should something move forward, I think that you will definitely see some type of court challenge like the other states that have completed a redistricting process are seeing in their states.
I thank you for your report. I thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Ratan.
Your report shows that Fort Scott Community College declined by 17%. Was there any discussion or insights into what happened?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I know that, I know that there have been some struggles at that particular institution over the past couple of years, and I don't know how much of that contributes to their decline in enrollment, but.
Has anyone on the staff heard anything about it? It's pretty large.
Fort Scott has had some leadership issues. Over the course of the last few years, there's been some leadership transitions and some issues at cabinet level across the, across the board, and that has led to some hiccups for them.
Thank you.
And financial, and defensive, some of that leadership, I know some of them, and you're not wrong. I just wanted to flesh out the.
I just worry, is there any watchouts there? Anything we can learn to make sure that doesn't happen to us? Or by looking at, well, coffee bills during, they're up 11%. Let's go do what they're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the Shared Governance Report with Caitlin Crumsek. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Caitlin Crumsek, Director of the Academic Achievement Center and the Language Resource Center. So last month, I gave an overview of what I believe to be our two main themes of shared governance this year, and that was communication and then how we're addressing topics. I think there's been some interesting and productive progress on both of these fronts in the last month, but we are in the middle of a lot of those conversations, so while I have nothing concrete to report tonight related to those issues, I expect that there's going to be a lot in the future, and there is progress being made. I want to make that very clear. So in the middle of this progress, the day-to-day work of shared governance continues. In Staff Council, we are preparing for our town hall on October 28th. The format of this town hall is new, and it's going to allow time for staff to share their thoughts and ideas, engage in open dialogue with colleagues and cabinet members, and meet their branch representatives. I also hear there's food, which is always a good reason to come and attend things. So Staff Council is continuing to work on our two goals as well, and those are communication processes and outreach and engagement. And then finally, a subset of us is continuing our work on a proposal for a staff sabbatical, which I am really very excited about. I think there's some cool stuff going on there. In ABC, there have been presentations on the college's approach to fraudulent applications and enrollment, as well as updates from our counseling team in terms of how they're serving students, and then just the normal updates that come in from different committees and the divisions as well. ABC has also put together really a rather impressive map of how information flows in and out of the council. It's a little mind-blowing, some really cool stuff there, too. And then in College Council, we've continued to have discussions around communication, and we've begun discussions on representation and looking at what voices are represented on our council and if there is any that are missing. Lastly, Ann Turney, the Chair of Staff Council, will be providing this update next month, and I think she'll give a little bit more in-depth discussion on what Staff Council is doing. So with that, I will take any questions.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions? You mentioned the ABC map and how impressive it is. Is that something we could get a copy of? I would love to see it.
I was thinking maybe that Jamie could come and present it, actually, because the map is great, but you need a little, there's some context.
You need some context? You need some context?
I, you know, I talked to each individual. I had gotten it. Dawn was the only person that's seen it, just because I just kind of showed it to her really quickly, but, I mean, you have to say it was pretty.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, right?
I would love that, if we could have somebody come present it. It sounds like a lot of work went into it, and I'd love to see.
Yeah, so Jamie's giving this report in December, and so, if that's not too late, I think she can do that then.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Thank you so much.
I was going to say, too, Ann's working on it for Staff Council, so maybe we can do something together with that.
Yeah, and Ann can give that next month. Not that it's not impressive what Staff Council is doing, but ABC's on another level.
All right. Next-level stuff. Can't wait to hear about it. All right. Thanks, Kaitlin. Next up is the report from the Faculty Association, and Michael Price. I think we're going to hear from you tonight. How are you doing?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board, and thank you as well to Irene from the FA. So, this is just an opportunity, I think, for me to introduce myself, tell you a little bit about myself, what I'm up to here in the, in the college and the department as well that I work for. So, I'm Michael Price. I'm an Associate Professor in the Journalism and Mass Communication Department. My background, as you can probably tell from my accent, is not local, not too far from Baptiste, but the other side of the channel, England and Shropshire. So, I used to work for the BBC back in England. I was a producer on their current affairs program, Panorama, up until the end of 2013. When I moved over here, my wife is from, up by Platt City. We tried to live in the UK. We tried to live in London and Belfast, but she missed that Midwestern niceness, let's say that, and her parents as well. So, we moved over here at the end of 2013. Since when, having bought some camera gear, I've continued to make investigative documentaries. I think of myself first and foremost, yes, as a professor here, lucky enough to be teaching here, but also as a journalist, and I try and bring that into my practice of teaching. So, these documentaries, for the most part, have focused on social equality issues here in the Midwest, typically half an hour in length for Kansas City PBS. So, I've looked at such things like lack of affordable housing, the legacy of redlining, transportation. The last one I put out, the end of, well, fall of last year, was a tale of three cities looking at the high homicide rate in Kansas City, Missouri, and what lessons could be drawn from the reduction at the time then in Kansas City, Kansas, and in Omaha, Nebraska. So, this is the type of thing that I bring into the classes that I teach. I teach mass media here and two videography classes as well. Outside of teaching here, I also, along with Tonya Hughes, Professor Tonya Hughes of the Photography, Film and Media Studies Department, this semester have set up a film club. We're just sort of getting that off the ground at the moment. I'm also part of the peer-to-peer initiative, which was launched by the Center for Teaching and Learning. So, we met with Dr. Mixa there the other day. This is a fantastic opportunity for me, for others in the group as well, I think, to meet each other, to meet professionals, to meet the leaders within the college, and to, through their advice and their example, look to raise our own game. It's, so far, I think we're three meetings in or so, it's been terrific. Couple of other things as well, if I may, just about the Journalism Department itself. We have three full-time faculty. We have Professor Mike Humphrey. He runs The Messenger, that Baptiste is editor-in-chief of. We also have Professor Gretchen Thum as well. Gretchen organized a session earlier this semester of MMGY Global, which is a marketing company. They were in speaking to students and advising students on how they can launch their careers in marketing. And next month, Gretchen is organizing a panel of sports journalists to talk to students as well. So, these are the type of opportunities we're trying to, as a department, bring to students. And thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah, thanks for joining us. I could just sit and listen to you talk all day.
I need to have a third career, which is with my voice, I think.
Yeah, you could be just a narrator somewhere. So, questions for Mr. Price, Trustee Cross.
Madam Chair, I think it was a Robert Duvall movie sometime in the late 90s. I heard a radio host say, "I would pay to hear Robert Duvall read the phone book." I don't know that you know a Will Grant at the BBC?
No, I don't.
He wrote or did an article on Venezuela's giant rodent called the copy bearer. It was 2009. I was driving from Washington DC to Wilmington, North Carolina overnight, and this, my dad's passed out in the seat next to me, and we were debating whether or not to go to Venezuela for my brother's wedding that summer. And the Bush State Department, the Obama State Department, and all the foreign ministries, English-speaking, that I could find, said, "Don't go." So, I get ahold of your guy, and I said, "Hey, man, it's my youngest brother's wedding. He met a Venezuelan woman here, a JCC." And I said, "Can we go?" And we didn't have kids, so I was 30 before kids, and he says, "Well, who are you going to be with? Tell me, tell me..." And we said, "We have a host family, they're going to put us up, and we'll be with somebody the whole time." He goes, "You'll be fine." So, we went. So, thank you to the BBC, and I'm sure glad you're here.
I think what the BBC, what the BBC does off the back of that story, which is fantastic, so here, of course, and it's a country.
I know it's your formal organization, but I love it.
But the fundamental that they are wedded to is with, very much within the DNA of the organization itself, and it's very inception back in the early 20th century, is a commitment to thorough journalism, double sourcing, and impartial journalism. So, we don't see ourselves as trying to propagandize. We'll give you the facts as far as we can establish them, you can make up your own mind.
If I may, Madam Chair. Of all the acronyms or whatever BBC can stand for, I'm aware of what they are. My brothers and I used to say BBC every time one of us was pregnant with a new baby. It was Bonus Baby Cross. And a friend of mine came to me and said, "Hey, do you know what that means?" I said, "Yeah, I do." I said, "But before it was that, it was the BBC, the Voice of Freedom for the Western Alliance," and some of us are big fans. And so, I'm sure glad you're here, and we stole you from them, and I know it's, I've left my hometown and worked on the East Coast and on the West Coast, but I'm glad to have you. I'll be quiet now, but I just want to say I appreciate your contribution. I'm a big fan of your organization.
Trustee Ratan.
Nice to meet you. I think this is the first time in my four years we've had journalism come and speak, and so, I love to hear about all the opportunities to learn here at the school, and I'm sure we'll all agree, it's an interesting time for journalism and journalists, and that you do have an important role, and where you reference teaching people to be impartial, fact-based, and critical thinkers. So, thank you for that. It is something critically needed here, and some people probably need to come back and take some of those classes and learn that lesson. Strike that. Also, thanks for taking the initiative to make your documentaries. I can tell that you're passionate about that, and I wondered to, where can I go and find those?
Yeah, so YouTube. I also have a website linked to my, my company's website, which is called English Landing Films. Obviously, there's a pun there, but it's a name taken from a park in Parkville. We live up by Parkville in English Landing Park up there. So, you can see a selection of my films there, including a film which won a national prize in 2016 called Our Divided City, looking at what it's like to, at that time in 2015, to live in the Prospect Corridor east of Truist. So, we follow a family living there. We followed law enforcement as well, who at the time, running with their Kansas City No Violence Alliance Initiative, brought a number of different law enforcement bodies together to try and work on getting in front of crime and offering young people a way out of a life that might otherwise take them into jail. And so, we cover quite a few things in that film. That's on the website as well, Our Divided City.
It is interesting because I work on downtown KCK revitalization, and, you know, you can drive out to the Legends and it's, you know, milk and honey, and in the same city, it's the opposite 15 minutes later. And then, there's a lot of leaders who talk about regional work, especially with the World Cup coming, and there's more talk than actually action in helping the whole region rise together. And so, thanks for, got to shine a mirror on it and a light on it first before we can act.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you. I had the opportunity to student-teach in a little teeny, I can't remember what they call them, hamlet of Chippinum. Yeah, in New Swindon. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Beautiful, beautiful.
It's not real England, but it's.
So, immediately upon hearing your voice, I, you sounded very familiar, and then, when you said that you do the PBS, I immediately recognized, that's where I recognize you from. I've had the pleasure of viewing several of yours. My parents, who have much more time to watch TV, my mother often sends me clips of these various programs on PBS that are really focusing on our city. And inequity is a very, very important part of me, because it's been my career, to teach in schools where Black and Brown children are for 20 years, and this city was built on inequity. And you drive through it, and you can see it on the right and on the left, and knowing our history is really important, and there are so many people in the city who do not know our history. So, I appreciate you bringing the light to it. I appreciate you making it very digestible. The thing I always find with your films is I want more, but they're very short and they're brief, and you get right into it, and then you go, "God, I got to go find out more about this, and I got to go..." So, thank you, because I think that's really, I would guess, part of what you're trying to do by making them short is get people's attention and then have them go find their own journey to learn more. So, thank you for that. I was going to say, the glimmer, I saw a little smile when you were going over the many things you've done on this campus, is starting a film club. So, tell me just a little bit more about that and what your goal is with that for our students.
Yeah, that's with Professor Tonya Hughes of the Photography, Film and Media Department. Really, what we're trying to do, this is a resurrection of a club that she was running a few years ago. We're trying to give the students the chance to work out what it is that they want to do, and then facilitate that as well. So, obviously, my area of speciality expertise is documentaries, so I'm trying to steer them that way. And Tonya is a brilliant filmmaker and a brilliant artist, so we're offering them sort of her input as well on that. But at this stage, they're kind of still working out what it is they would like to do with the film club. We are hopeful, though, of next semester maybe taking them, going with them to the True/False Film Festival in Columbia, maybe as a little field trip, you know, that's documentaries for the most part, so.
Very good. And how many students right now are in the film club?
Well, it varies, but we're about 10 at the moment. We're hoping to get that up.
Yeah, very good. Well, thank you so much. Thank you. Like Trustee Ratan said, I think you are the first journalism professor to visit us in the six years that I've been here, so I always enjoy learning about the various departments and what you all do, most importantly for our students and our community, because the, so many people are launched from here to go off to do great things, and it starts with the excellent professors who get them on their journey. So, thank you for all that you do for that. I hope that Kansas treats you well, and you like the weather enough that you'll hang around a lot more and help enlighten people who've lived here their whole lives on what has actually transpired here in this city. So, thank you.
I may just add in very, very quickly as well, just off the back of that, that, you know, to the point that was made as well, that this, this issue of social inequality still exists today.
Oh, yeah.
How I've seen time and time again, for all students, for many different students, how something like that, their realization that that's something that they can dig into, they can look into, they can find out facts about, and then share those facts. The fundamentals of journalism are incredibly exciting for our students.
Yeah. And I find to be, I find journalism to be a parallel to teaching in that it's a combination of the art and the science of it, right? So, you've got the artistic way to represent that, but you have the science of getting the facts and figuring out the way to do it, and that's where the beauty of it is. It's why I enjoy my profession. I'm sure it's why you enjoy yours. So, there, I am 40 years old, and there are, I feel like, even growing up in this city and going downtown every Sunday for church, there are things I learn every week that you just don't realize are, were written into what we live now, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I am at the risk of, I guess, echoing what other folks have said and getting on my soapbox. I want to thank you. I want to thank you for a few things, bringing your talents to our institution, for one, but your dedication to impartial journalism, and I'm going to go out and find these. I've not had the privilege of watching your, I don't have a lot of time. I'm going to find the time to watch your stuff. I had the privilege of spending a year working for the United Nations in post-war Bosnia in the late 90s, and every day, I would drive by what remained of the newspaper building. And it was bombarded by the Serbian bombing for about a year, trying to destroy that building, and the journalists who were putting out the newspaper, you probably know this story, lived in the basement of that building for a year so that they could keep the free presses rolling. And I tell people often that the key, the key to maintaining our freedoms in a democratic society is a free and impartial press, so that we can count on getting the news, the hard news, the good news, and the bad news, in a way that makes sense to us. And that's what you do, that's the life you live, and that's what you're teaching our students. And what a gift is that, because an impartial journalism resource is at the very foundation of our, of our democracy, and so, thank you for that. I'm still trying to get my head around you leaving England, because I spent some time there, and it's absolutely amazing, but, but you chose to do that, and we're so much the more grateful for it. So, thank you for, thank you for what you do, and I'm going to find your stuff, and I'm going to watch it. So, thank you for sharing your, your talents with us. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Irene.
That was wonderful. That was wonderful.
How about Irene Oliveras for sharing that?
Yeah, thank you for, I, I love it that you give us the opportunity, Irene, to meet people that we might not otherwise meet and get to know a little more about the wonderful things that our faculty do, so thank you for that, for sure.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Johnson County Research, Johnson County Educ, J-Cert, and Trustee Smith Everett.
It's not going to be nearly as good as the last two presentations.
It's kind of hard to follow.
I know. It's like, kind of like Dick Carter, like, "Sorry, I'm here." So, the J-Cert will meet for our bi-annual meeting coming up later this month on October 27th at 8:00 AM, and I will attend that and have more updates for you next month on that. Just as a reminder, J-Cert was established a number of years ago with a 3.8 sales tax to set up a research triangle for Johnson County, and has done very well to support the three institutions that benefit from that. We are in an oversight role. We do not benefit from that tax, but we are seen as oversight to make sure those institutions aren't competing with the wonderful things that we offer here at the college. So, J-Cert received $2.3 million in sales tax in September and distributed $775,000 to each of the three university entities. September sales tax receipts were strong compared to last year and 9.6% more than July 2025. The cumulative receipts through September are about 3.4% higher year-to-date than 2024. And at this point, each university entity has received $6.5 million through September, which is about 3.5% more to each of those, which is K-State Olathe, KU Edwards, and KU Clinical Research through the same period of 2024. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions for Trustee Smith Everett? All right. Moving right along, and I'm hoping my voice is going to last for the rest of the meeting. Here's, here's open. Kansas Association of Community Colleges, and Trustee Cross, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a report tonight, nothing to report really since our last meeting in Arc City in August. Our next meeting will be at Garden City Community College on December 5th and 6th.
All right. Thank you for that. The Foundation Report, Trustee Ratan, I'm confident you have some things to share.
Thank you, Chair Rail. And some enchanted evening is fast approaching, and there are a few individual tickets available for purchase at jccc.edu/SE. The income is 126% over the goal. So far, we raised $1.5 million. Thank you, Joy. 14 student-centered programs will be highlighted at the event. The student speaker is an alumni and past Senate President, State Representative in Connecticut, Corey Paris. Also, remember, we will honor another alumni, John Stewart, as Johnson Countyan of the Year. The student agency has been hired by the JCCC Foundation to manage the JC3 Safe Finger Operations. The students gave a great job, have done a great job improving packaging and making it. it more sustainable, more cost-effective, and they've even created a marketing plan and they've attended a simulation conference to help promote the product. On September 17th, the Foundation hosted the Fall Scholarship Luncheon. About 200 scholarship recipients attended along with trustees, Foundation Board members and donors. The event was a great way to hear the stories of students about the impact of scholarships, one of my favorites, events. And then finally, the JCCC Foundation reported their fiscal year 25 finance report to the Management Committee. The Foundation has invested $1.85 million for student assistance. That is the highest ever. And a total of $5.6 million was invested in the college overall, including student assistance, program support, project support, campus support, performing arts, visual arts and general support and operations. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that report. Any questions for Trustee Rutan? So I remember Corey Paris well. Did you have something?
Kind of. Just thanks to Joy Ginsburg. She's amazing.
She's amazing.
And everything she says she'll do, she has done and benefits our students.
Yeah, I agree with you. Shout out to Joy, for sure. I was just gonna say, I remember Corey Paris. I remember when he used to address the board. And I'm so excited to see him come back and speak. I think it's gonna be amazing. So I'm really looking forward to that.
I'm excited.
So if you don't have your tickets yet, get your tickets. There's very few left.
The other thing I was gonna add, and Chair Rail, you may know more about it, but if people don't know what JC3 is, there is a gentleman who basically willed this technology to us, gave us the patent and allows us to make money off of the patent. And I believe that nursing students practice finger pricks off of the, the little, it's like a little, it's a little big finger. But Foundation had been managing it, but really didn't have the resources to grow it, market it and make it better. And so, we do have a student agency. We contracted the student agency to go and figure out how to just take it to the next level. And it was a really good presentation I attended.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Any other questions or comments for the Foundation Report? Perfect. We'll move on to our committee reports. First up is Collegial Steering and Trustee Smith Everett. If you would be so kind as to give that report because I had to leave the meeting early.
I did as well, and so I may defer to President Mixa here, but basically, the Collegial Steering Group is still working on what our purpose and agenda is. And so, it was a nice, robust debate about that and how it fits into the shared governance of the college. And, yeah, I don't think any major conclusions were brought, but we will continue to discuss it into the spring. Anything you would add?
I think that's what we came up with.
All right.
All right. Any questions for Trustee Smith Everett about the Collegial Steering Report? Moving on, next up is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee and Trustee Rutan.
Hello again and thank you. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee met on Wednesday, October 1st, 2025. Christina McGee, Vice President of Human Resources, reported on HR Department's initiatives. The Human Resources Department has developed a comprehensive turnover dashboard, which is in the final stages of testing. In addition, HR is nearing completion of the implementation of the new learning management system by NEO, NeoEd. Ms. McGee stated that the HR Department is in the process of establishing HR goals that are aligned with the College Strategic Bridge Plan, specifically focusing on the employee engagement goal. Rachel Haynes, Director, Employee Engagement and Development, updated the committee on the following initiatives: the Fall Professional Learning Days, Years of Service Award Luncheon and the Employee Picnic. Barbara Cooper, Director, Human Resources, presented information to the committee regarding the 2025 Annual Evaluations, Monthly Trainings, specifically focused on mental health and the upcoming 360-degree supervisor evaluation process. She also mentioned that HR switched to a new third-party employee background check vendor and it integrates with the current applicant tracking system, which was, has also streamlined the hiring process. Ms. Cooper shared that her team is working with JCCC's marketing team to enhance the career webpage and promotional materials. The updates aim to attract a broader applicant pool and position us as an employer of choice. Ms. Cooper reported that open enrollment for employee benefits will be taking place October 17th through October 28th. JCCC will host a CAPERS Pre-Retirement Seminar and have representatives available from the college provider vendors. In addition, Ms. Cooper shared that an RFP has been initiated for an employee retirement plan, investment consulting and management services provider for the college's 403B and 457 plans. That concludes my report.
All right. Any questions for Trustee Rutan about the Employee Engagement Report? All right. That takes us to the Management and Finance Committee Report. Trustee Cross, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 AM on Wednesday, October 1st. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages four through six of the Board Packet. We had the following reports. A report from the Management and Finance Committee was received regarding the following from staff. Joy Ginsburg, the Executive Director of the JCCC Foundation, provided an informational report on the JCCC Foundation Fiscal Year 2025 Finances, Program Support Expenditures and Fundraising Activities. In Fiscal Year 2025, the Foundation increased total assets and their endowment and distributed 1.8 million to the college for student scholarships. She highlighted the annual harvest dinner, the Match Made in Heaven Nerman Museum Gala, the Open Pedal Employee Giving Campaign and the Summer SIPS and Scholarship, the Summer SIPS and Scholarships Event, including a video from a student scholarship recipient. This year's Some Enchanted Evening Annual Fundraising Gala will be held on Saturday, November 8th, 2025. Next, we had a report from Information Technology, Mr. Rob Caffey, Vice President, Information Services, CIO, and Don Campbell, Director, Project Management Office, provided the Quarterly Information Services Report. Updates included October Cybersecurity Awareness Month activities, implementation of the new identity management system and the internal and external audit activities related to IT general controls and compliance. They also discussed the ongoing engagement to assess the college's IT operating model and gave a status update on the new CRM implementation. Next, we received a Budget Calendar Fiscal Year 2026-27 Report from Megan Casey, Vice President, CFO. She presented the Preliminary Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year 2026-27. No significant changes to the budget timeline or process are expected, and at the December 3rd, 2025 Management and Finance Committee Meeting, the committee will review proposed budget guidelines for Fiscal Year 2027. Recommendation for approval of Fiscal Year 2027 budget guidelines will be brought to the Board at the December 18th, 2025 meeting. Next, we had a Capital Acquisitions and Improvements Progress Report from Mr. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, provided the committee with information on facilities projects from the Capital Acquisitions and Improvements Matrix. The Matrix summarizes and monitors budget and actual expenses for campus services, projects and includes payments through September 30th, 2025. The recent renovation of the new supported education program classroom and kitchen in Commons Building 322, the former student lounge, was also highlighted. And I believe that's the, is that the first designated space, for clear? Do I have that right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I paid attention. Yes.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions for Trustee Cross? All right. Thank you so much. That takes us to the Student Success Committee Report. And Trustee Hamel, I believe you're filling in for Trustee Jennings tonight.
That's correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student Senate, Student Success Committee met at 9:45 AM on Wednesday, October 1st. Committee heard updates from Barry Bailey on curriculum, Shelley Allen about guided pathways and an annual update on faculty development by Farrell Hoy Janab. Barry Bailey, Professor Librarian, presented new courses, course modifications, deactivations and program modifications effective for the 26-27 academic year. Details will be found on the Consent Agenda portion of the Board Packet. Shelley Allen provided an update on guided pathways. She discussed the four pillars of guided pathways: clarifying the path, entering the path, keeping the path and ensuring students are learning. Shelley said, as of September 15th, mandatory advising is in place for all degree-seeking incoming students before enrolling in the spring. She explained, another component of guided pathways is using software to measure students' progress, persistence and the students meeting with their counselor at 15:30 and 45 credit hour intervals. Shelley also said the transfer maps have been built for 18 schools. Farrell Hoy Janab, Director, provided an annual update on faculty development. She discussed the changing landscape of higher education and the historical teaching model isn't how today's students learn. Farrell then provided background on the information of the Center for Teaching and Learning Center and highlighted many accomplishments, including revamping the new faculty orientation, peer-to-peer program, faculty fellows and ACU certification. She highlighted some of the faculty activities that includes a weekly faculty newsletter, KCPDC workshops, book discussions, writing retreats and the SOTL Academy. Farrell emphasized that the adjunct faculty are included in faculty development and an adjunct certification training program is offered. She announced future programs, including enhanced and quality online instruction, implementing a formalized orientation program for adjunct faculty and developing comprehensive in-house just-in-time training tailored to JCCC and accessible to all faculty. And thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions for Trustee Hamel? All right. While you're at it, that takes us to the President's Recommendation for Action of the Treasurers Report is first up. And Trustee Hamel, I believe that's you as well.
Thank you again. The Board Packet includes the Treasurers Report for the month ended August 31st of 2025. Page 1 includes the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. An ad valorem tax distribution of 7.3 million was received from Johnson County in September and will be reflected in next month's report. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers Report for the month ended August 31st, 2025 subject audit. And I so move.
Second. Motion by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Cross. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. Dr. Mixa, I believe it's your turn to give us your monthly report to the Board. Excited to hear what you've been doing.
Oh, well, hopefully, hopefully it'll be exciting. Thank you, Chair Rail.
I never doubt that when it comes to you.
Well, we'll see. So I just, first, your, the enrollment reports that are current for actually right now are at your desk there. If you get a chance, take a look at it. Our head count, down 0.1%, which is basically flat. And then our, our total credit hours is up 0.3%. So we feel we're doing pretty good. We certainly want to be like Coffeeville, Coffeeville up 11%. And we'll get there, just give us a little time. We've got some plans as we're working our way through. So I just thought I'd kind of break down some different activities. I'll start in the area of academics. Our Honors Program welcomed 53 new students to the program. So there's now about 134 active honors students there. This is a great group of students. I had the opportunity to interact with them in the collab and I think they're gonna do wonderful things and they'll really make JCCC proud. Hyundai America Regional Placement Team was on campus, working with our automotive program to talk to those students about careers in automotive and how to get started out there. So I think that that's a great thing for our students, to help them get career-ready when they're done with our program. Some of our JCCC mass students competed in the America Mathematics Association for Two-Year Community Colleges Math League Competition. That's a, that's a big word. AMATIC is what it's called for my math days. I gotta give a shout out to my math people. Our team got first in the central region and then 13th place overall. So, yeah, that deserves a big cheer. Another big cheer is one of our students earned a perfect score in round one, which has only happened once in JCCC history. So this is a great math person. So we're really excited about that. Another thing that's happening in the math department, two math faculty were awarded a one-year planning grant from the National Science Foundation to develop innovative math curriculum, which I think is always great to mention because it's always difficult to get National Science Foundation awards. And so, that's a really, a great honor. But this college seems to be getting those, which means we are an excellent institution as always. The Student Bake Sale is happening on Thursday afternoons. The line, I can tell you, is long, well, if you don't get down there early. It is worth the wait, especially for the chocolate chip cookies. If you know me, I love those chocolate chip cookies. They are to die for. I do need to throw out a big shout out to Pete Belk. He grabbed a couple of cookies for me when I couldn't wait in line and brought them over to my office. So thank you, Pete. I really appreciate that. Student Success and Engagement, our new Chief of Police, Seth Mullis. Raise your hand or stand up, Seth. We love that, right?
Sure.
That's right. Officer Dan Robles and Administrative Assistant Angela Epperson, they held a popcorn with the police to engage the students and the community, get to know them. So that was great. I got to stand out there for a little while, so it's a lot of fun. We had some nice giveaways for that group. For Suicide Prevention Month, our Student Life Organization offered programming on awareness, education and support for students in our area. The Center for Student Involvement also held a initiative on preventing hazing on college campuses. So again, I think that that's really an important thing. And then Ivory Smith and Haley Crawford from our Financial Aid Office presented a budget basic workshop for our students, which is always really important, making sure our students know about budget. In the area of workforce training, we had, our registration and community engagement is ongoing in all their programs. One thing to note, our NAIL program, we just had a graduation from that recently, so that is happening there. And our English language learners in our GED classes are up and rolling and they're, they're moving, moving along steadily. A few other interesting events, I think, just to kind of bring out that I've been able to get to or been a part of with some different people. Yesterday, myself along with Trustee Rutan and VP of Workforce Development, Alicia Waldman, I have some big words there, we presented for the Shawnee Chamber, so we had a good time there. I think we, for lack of better, we'll get some business out of that. Some people were really interested in our leadership program and the stuff that we do there. And there, the crowd had some great questions. Dr. McLeod and I, we attended the League for Innovation Fall Board Meeting and just today, we spent some time at lunch talking about some ways we can bring back some of those ideas to campus, those ideas of innovation and grow that as well, too. Deb and I got an opportunity to tour the Kansas City Art Institute. And so, what was great about it, we were there to tour the Art Institute, beautiful campus. I love the way they have some great engagement activities or the way they engage their students with their spaces and everything on campus. But the cool part about it is we ran into multiple JCC students that had a transfer there and they had nothing but great things to say about JCCC. And then also, they talked a lot about our fads building, in especially the work that Mark Cowherdine is doing over there as well, too. So I thought I'd do a shout out to them as well, too. Deb and I got to spend some time on a Saturday morning with the students with the JCC Interculture Retreat. What an awesome opportunity. We went out, I don't know exactly where it is, I'm still learning my way around Kansas. I didn't know if I was gonna make it back after getting all the way out there. Thank goodness for Google that it didn't go away, but that was great. We participated in a few of the icebreaker events and learned a lot about our students who come from other countries, other states, other counties, other cities, and then right here in Johnson County. And I think the best part about it was just to watch the students, how they kind of came in a little bit fearful. Kathy, right in the back, Kathy from Jamaica, I'm just trying, that's how I remember everybody. But I just love how they came in. They were a little bit nervous, but basically told them, put their cellphones away and enjoy themselves. And, and I thought it was awesome, the time that we spent there, it was wonderful. I also got another unique opportunity, I thought. I met with other community college presidents and Jeff Schmitz, who is the President of the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, at the Federal Reserve Bank in Kansas City. So it was really cool. It was cool to be at the bank. Also, Chapel Rowan was getting ready, so they were getting ready for their concert. I think people were starting to line up even when I was there. But it was really cool. We got to talk about some of the challenges facing higher education, specifically community colleges. So it was great to kind of share some of those different things that we had there. And it was also, if anybody's been there, I got to see the museum and, you know, they have these machines that fill up the carts with money and they, they said like 4,300 bills can fit in one, one cart. And there's 43 $100 bills, so it was like $43 million, however you multiply it out. And there's multiple carts going through. It's just like, wow, that's a lot of money, as it worked away, as it worked away through. I'll also say, I got to do, the person that was here speaking, I forgot, what was his name, Jim, right? Who spoke?
Michael Price.
Michael Price, that's right. It was great to do the peer-to-peer. That was a wonderful event. You know, there's a lot, there's a thousand of us there, you know. So we got to do the peer-to-peer event. So it was wonderful talking to faculty and getting that opportunity to do that. And not only did I get to go, but Caitlin went as well and got to share some wonderful things about her life as well, too, there. So that was wonderful also. And then lastly, I spoke my first Japanese words in front of a crowd this month at the Japanese Fest. But you won't be really impressed with the word. It was, the Japanese word was "Ohio." I'm sure it was accented a little bit better than that, but that means "good morning," right? So I got to say that in front of the crowd. But it was also wonderful. We got to break open the barrel of sake and drink a little sake on stage. So that was a wonderful event as well, too. I just, I couldn't believe how big the Japanese festival was. So it was great. If you ever get the opportunity to go to that in the future, it's wonderful. And with that, that's the end of my report. Any questions?
That was an awesome report. I always love hearing about the great things going on around the campus. Any questions for Dr. Mixa, Trustee Smith-Evert?
I do, and I apologize. I do not mean to put you on the spot. But when I saw the, the enrollment was flat, I always think about our website, because I think our website is a little too sophisticated to, for the average Joe, like me, when I tried to help my daughter enroll this last year, and I will be helping her again in the spring. So I didn't know if you had an update on when the newer version of our website would be rolling out. Not to put Chris on the spot, but I...
But we'll put Chris on the spot, right? So what I can tell you is they have started working on it, and it's not an overnight thing to do a website, right? Because you're trying to, you're, it's based on data and input that you're getting from people. So it does take some time. But I'll let Chris, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, it's probably going to be, I would say, 12 to 14 months. We're actually in the middle of a discovery process right now. We've engaged with, actually got a report today with about 500 people so far with feedback. So discovery is the important part of it, because we learn not only from students, community members, as well as staff and faculty. The theme I think I would leave you with is we're working towards a front door, not a warehouse. And the warehouse is really the enormous amount of content, because we are such a comprehensive community college. That's a part of it. So it's how to get the language down to the audience that we need to get to, and also allow them to get the pass as quick as possible.
Okay. I mean, have you heard of Wix? I mean, Wix can make a website in like 24 hours.
I could spin you one up here really quick, but I don't think you would be...
Yeah, right, right, right.
There's a lot of other things that come into this. So we're working on different registration software. So I know Alisa and CE, they're looking at registration. I know also on our side with the CRM that Shelley spoke to in one of the committees, we're working on CRM for the application. So the website's basically the house of that, as far as the enrollment, the application, and some of those. Those are ancillary bolt-ins that basically come onto the website. So the website project is not going to include, on our side, registration processes once you click in to enroll and apply. But there are other efforts that are feeding that, that we're working in tandem, as well as with the CRM, as well as with AI. So there's a ton of moving parts, as well as accessibility. I can go on and on. But again, 12, 14 months, it's going to be a process, but it's an important process to get it right for everyone involved. And everyone has a say in how that goes, too.
Okay. All right.
Fair enough.
That's funny.
Patience, please.
Well, and I'll throw out, you know, I've been, I've seen multiple website re-dos at different places. You know, we're at a time now where you got to think about, we got to bring Google search or keywords into the website. That's got to link with, then also, the AI that's going out there and grabbing information. It's got to link with, then, if you have your, we're going to have like an AI chatbot in there that can talk to students as well. I mean, you got to think about all that has to come together. I don't think that Wix will do that in 24 hours.
I'm sure there's like a widget that you can just, you know...
But I would love to do that. That would be great.
Well, I, just to, the flat numbers, which I think this is the first really flat numbers we've had in quite a few years. So it's, you know, not any big red flag. But I do think, I love the analogy of a front door, because my daughter is in a graduating class that, they were in middle school during COVID. They're graduating. And they are really tech-savvy and very impatient. And I have talked, I mean, I got a whole slew of kids I'm trying to get to come to this college. And they won't give it more than five minutes if they can't find what they're looking for. And so my concern is, that's a deterrent for people who might otherwise try to pursue coming to us. And I don't ever want any deterrents for students that want to come to JCCC. So thank you so much. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Cross, go right ahead.
I want to thank Dr. Mixa and everyone for putting this together. One time, a couple of years ago when I was chair, Dr. Bound had asked, "Is it really necessary to do this?" And not to call him out, but it's not really a bad question. Is it a good use of staff and administration's time to compile this monthly report? I thought it was, and I had asked him to continue, and I appreciate you continuing to do it. I don't know who's writing the next book here, and I don't really care, because I've said and done some silly things in the world. But I think it's a good draft of, first draft of history, and allows us to draw back and see all the good things we're doing. So I appreciate you doing it. Don't you have a background in math?
Yes.
Is that why you highlighted the math thing?
I mean, you know, I got to connect with my people sometimes.
All right. Any other questions?
Can we get some of those present?
What?
The ones who won the math league?
Sure.
Get some of them up here. I'd love to see that.
That's really awesome.
Hear about that.
Yeah, it's great.
All right. Any other questions?
I think that's historic, obviously.
Yeah, the perfect score is, I mean, that's phenomenal, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Can I do one more thing?
You go right ahead.
We've got some great stuff up on the walls right now. So I just want to make sure that I present that to you guys so you have an opportunity to make some great comments about it.
Former trustee Paul Snyder, I hope you are watching. Stop sending me emails and bothering me. It's up now.
There we go. He's, every event, he says, "Why isn't it up?" You can sure get it up. He watches.
Did he really?
Yes. Every event, he asks me about it, so.
Trustee Paul Snyder, I hope you're watching.
It looks good.
And I just throw out, it's not, it wasn't as easy as you think, right? Because you had to have the colors work just right. I'm looking at it, Chris, because his team, there's a lot of people that worked on it. But it does take a lot to do it, because you got to have just the right colors. Otherwise, you're, you get blended into the, to the words and stuff. So that's why it was a little bit more than just overnight.
Looks great, though, and I think it's really important to have in this room. So I really loved seeing it tonight. Thank you for everybody that worked on it.
I love it that it's right behind us. I like that. All right. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Mixa? All right. That brings us to the New Business section of the agenda. I'm not aware of any new business. The Old Business section of the agenda is next. I'm not aware of any old business. That brings us to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an opportunity for the Board to take up in a single motion, matters of a fairly routine nature. And the first thing I will ask is whether anyone has anything they'd like to pull from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We have no executive session tonight, and so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Trustee Smith-Evert, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Let's hear your efficiency.
It's a tough record to beat right here. It's a tough record to beat right there.